It is 6:30, December the 12th, 2018. With that, Jamie, may I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Wayne?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chu?
Here.
And Mayor Morrison?
Here. With that, if you're able to, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. With that, public comment. Does anybody from the public have a comment that's not on the agenda? Hello, Cindy?
Cindy Winter. This is very brief. One day last week, I was thinking about Lucky Drive. When I looked at the minutes of October 17, the date I spoke about it, I saw that the public comments section states that I did say something, but the topic is omitted. I would suggest that the briefest of references to each public comment or subject be added after his or her name. The public would then know whether the tape is appropriate to refer to and not have to rummage through tapes one after another. For example, if someone spoke about, say, traffic on Magnolia, it would seem easy for the city clerk to add these three words, "traffic on Magnolia," after that person's name. And for tonight, after my name, add my topic, which is one word, minutes. This small change would add a basic transparency to our city records, making it more convenient for the public to learn what is important enough to some other members of the public that they take the trouble to appear and comment in person. Maybe I'm missing something, but I can see no downside here. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else in the public? Hi, please come up.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Dave Feingold. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Rag Antifradis, and I came tonight to just speak very briefly on behalf of the Larkspur Marina Property Owners Association to just reiterate some things that they would like me to say to you tonight as you consider their item 4.7 on the consent calendar, the reimbursement agreement. The association, many of the passionate members who are going to be here tonight, but they're at holiday parties, so they've enlisted me instead, is very grateful for the city to work with them on this project. I've been working with Mr. Woodruff, as you may know, for some time to draft this reimbursement agreement. We've considered all other options for funding this. This involves the outlet gate for the lagoon, which is critically important. Since 2015, it's been basically just plugged by the city, so it no longer operates as planned. The association, some months ago, has passed a special assessment overwhelmingly by the lagoon owners. They have the funding in hand, both for the estimated costs as well as reserves and contingencies. They're very anxious to get this work moving, and with this funding mechanism, we think we'll have the opportunity to do that. So with that, I thank you for your time and for the work of the city and the city manager and staff to get this project going. Thank you.
Larry, Chu?
Would it be appropriate for me to retroactively pull item 4.7 from the consent agenda?
We haven't gotten there yet, so you can pull 4.7 when we get to it, 5.7.
I'm just referring to the comments that we just made as part of the public comment period.
The public can address the consent calendar during the general public comments without pulling an item.
Okay, thank you.
Great, all right. Anyone else in the public? No, I'll go ahead and close that. Presentations, proclamations, we have none. Now we come to the consent calendar. Anybody from the council want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Larry, do you want to pull 4.7?
Oh, I didn't need to, but since the last gentleman spoke on it, I wasn't sure if it needed to be pulled in order for comment to be made.
It's fine for the public to speak to items on the consent calendar during general public comment without the item being pulled.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to pull anything from the consent calendar? All right, I see none. I'll bring it back to the council. May I have an approval of the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone oppose? I see none. All right, thank you. Now we go to the city manager's oral report. Dan Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, just wanted to remind the council and the public that in addition to the fact that the council's going to go dark after tonight until your second date in January, which is the 16th, City Hall is going to close. Most of the city, except for essential services, are going to be closed the week of December 24th through the New Year's holiday. So there will still be folks providing some of the essential services, and there will generally be folks checking the messages and stuff. So if something arises, staff can address it. But the offices will be closed, and the public, a lot of the staff will be using this as an opportunity to take some time. In addition, just wanted to highlight if members of the public or the council aren't aware, didn't receive a letter. I know there's a letter that's gone out to a database that we have. Recreation, our recreation department, working with Public Works for improving Piper Park, is soliciting sponsorships for new picnic tables. And you have an opportunity to make a donation to purchase a new cement picnic table. We have a few in the park. Folks can go see in our picnic table area. And then you can make that donation in memory of someone or for another reason. That's the same way we do it for our benches around town in terms of honoring folks. And we're going to see if we can start to replace some of our other picnic tables out there. So if folks are interested in that, contact the recreation department. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay. How about councilmember oral reports and comments?
I don't have anything either.
All right, we'll move on. So we have public hearing. I see we have none. So we'll move to our business items. 8.1, award consultant services agreement for the storm drain master plan and receive an update on state trash capture requirements. So the first is to talk about Resolution 8718. So we have a staff report. Hello, Julian.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director. I have a short presentation for you tonight, a storm drain update. Two components to it. One, as you mentioned, does request an action of council. That's awarding a consultant services contract. The second part of the presentation is merely for your information regarding trash amendment. So briefly just go over some background, and then I'll do a little detail on the storm drain master plan consultant services agreement, and then the NPDES, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Trash Amendment. So some background on our storm drain system. We have 19 miles of storm drains, so compare that to 33 miles of roads that we have. And then in conjunction with all those storm drains, we have catch basins, manholes. So what most people, all most people see of the storm drain system is what's in the photo here. That's a drainage inlet or a curb inlet. It's a grate in the gutter, but there's much more. All of the guts of the system is under the street and not seen and hard to assess the condition of. So that's the 19 miles of pipe. And much like the street, that infrastructure has a lifespan. Again, it's harder to assess because it's buried underground, but much like our streets start to crack and get potholes over time, so do the storm drains underground. As time wears on, those pipe materials can fail. If they're metal, they can rust, things like that. The other issue with storm drains is capacity. So again, comparing it to a street, as a street is maybe first built, and a neighborhood builds up, that street maybe needs other lanes for the amount of traffic that increases over time. The same thing can happen with the storm drains. If they're put in, some of them 60 years ago, when there was a certain level of development, and over time we have more impervious surface, some of those storm drains that were installed 60 years ago are not big enough to handle the amount of water that gets to them these days. And so with storm drains, we also have environmental conditions. So different than sanitary sewer, which is where the waste from your home goes that goes to a treatment plant, the storm sewer that's in the street goes directly into a creek or into a channel. So anything that's on our street that gets into that storm drain flow is going to end up in our creek. So there's a lot of environmental concerns about what materials we're passing into these environmentally sensitive areas. And so to address that, there's something called the NPDES permit that I'll get into, and then most recently, a trash amendment for that permit. So focusing on the storm drain master plan component of it, we have had a few studies of our storm drain system over the years, but they're quite old, '87, '88, and '89, and none of those were complete storm master plans. They all focused on a different component of the system. And so the photo here is a video of inside of a storm drain pipe. And so one of the issues we can have is, this is a concrete pipe, so we don't worry too much about it wearing out, but as the ground moves, especially in some of the flat areas in the bay mud, the pipes can eventually work themselves apart. And it can be anything from a nuisance, such as it doesn't carry the water as well, to a significant problem if that gap is wide enough, and the material around the pipe can start getting into the pipe, and you end up with sinkholes. So the goals of the storm drain master plan are to assess the condition of our pipes. What do they look like? How much life do they have left? As well as the capacity, how are they able to handle the flow that we anticipate is going to make its way to those systems during a storm so that we can mitigate any flooding that may occur due to undersized pipes or structures? And then these are primarily two things we're going to look at. And then from that, the storm drain master plan would list some improvements, some repair strategies, either repairs or replacements, improvements, upsizing, and then we would come up with a plan, kind of a draft capital plan, for spacing those improvements out over time and pick some priority projects. And then the storm drain master plan will also touch on funding. So we just recently did this for our streets. We had a five-year plan, but we had a pot of money there for the streets. We don't have an identified pot of money for the storm drain issue. So we're going to do an assessment of what needs to be done, and then there will be discussion in the storm drain master plan about the different ways of potentially funding some of those improvements in the future. So we did a request for proposals. The storm drain master plan itself is included in the adopted capital improvement program. And at one point, we were hoping to be able to make some progress on this in-house, but with the paving program and the bridge, we've decided our best course of action is to select a consultant to help us. We were going to need a consultant on some level for help with this, to do the modeling, for instance, but we decided the most efficient way to get the storm drain master plan completed as soon as possible is to hire a consultant. So we did a request for proposals. Overwhelmingly, the proposal from Schaaf &amp; Wheeler was selected as the best response to the request. They have numerous storm drain master plans, big and small, ones that include tidal influences, pump stations. They're currently working on a storm drain master plan for Mill Valley and Alameda also. So they've documented a process they're going to go through, which is a system inventory. They're going to go through the data that we already have. We have, over the years, collected some information, both with cameras and videos of our existing systems, so they'll analyze that, and then they'll look at our system and determine what are the next best places that they need to get a camera in or a video to assess the condition. And then they'll look at our five pump stations, too, and look at the pump sizing and the age of the pumps and the pump station themselves, too. And then they're going to build a hydraulic model. So what this is, is in a computer program, they take all the pipes and they connect them all together, and then they run simulated storms. They can run a one-year storm or a bigger storm through it, and it shows whether the pipes can handle that flow or not. And in the more detailed models, they can actually show you how much flooding would occur. And then through all these, they'll come up with a deficiency list, and then we'll meet with them and we'll go over their deficiency list with what our observed conditions are. Every year, we have storms, and we know our hotspots that we go to, that we typically get water standing in the street, and so we'll compare what we've experienced with what they come up with, and we'll come up with a list of what the hotspot deficiencies are. And then they'll come up with repairs or replacement programs for each of those deficiencies, and then from there, we'll prioritize those and come up with either a five- or a 10-year plan for implementing some of those, as well as identifying some priority projects. And one of the triggers for a priority project is going to be with our five-year paving plan. Any of these that are deemed to need to be replaced or repaired in the next five years, we want to do it before we pave the street. And so to the extent we have knowledge of our storm drain system, we already selected our year-one paving streets to be streets that we don't think we have issues with storm drains. So we've already kind of done a preliminary screening, but one of the drivers for this project is getting it done quickly. And so they're going to do the condition assessment, which is going to be one of the bigger triggers for replacement. One of the bigger areas we're paving in the first year is up in the Greenberry Hills. I don't think we have a lot of capacity issues there because the steeper the pipe is, the more water it can carry. So we're going to be focusing in on condition assessment early on, January or February, so that if we need to, we can pull some of those streets out of year-one paving because the storm drain master plan investigation shows we have an issue with them. We don't think that's going to be an issue. Like I said, we pre-screened our year-one paving streets, but we're trying to get the storm drain master plan on a schedule that we can pick up anything we missed. And so they've got a schedule that has them completing in about six months, so we're hoping to have a storm drain master plan in the summer. One of the goals is to get to the point where we have some priority projects so that when we come to you with our capital improvement program for next year in spring, we'll already have some information from the storm drain master plan so we can start looking out into the future. So we negotiated a contract with Schaaf &amp; Wheeler for their work on this project, and the fee is $80,000, which requires council action to award a contract of that size. It is included in the capital improvement program budget, so there's no budget amendment. It's already accounted for in the budget this year. So I'm going to run into the NPDES, and one of the things is, this is one of those programs that has tons of acronyms, so shout out if I say something that I haven't explained what it is. So NPDES is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and I'm just going to give you a brief overview of a document that we just filed. We were mandated to file with the state. We just filed it last week, and it's to do with reducing trash in our waste, trash in our waste, trash in our streets that gets into the storm drains that ultimately ends up in the creeks. And so the city holds a Phase II NPDES permit. And what that means is, if we go back, in 1972, there was an amendment to the Federal Clean Water Act that basically said that having pollutants and your discharge to the streams and water beds is unlawful unless you comply with a permit. And so it took a few years for the feds to develop those permits. They started with some of the bigger municipalities, and so in 1990, they came out with Phase I permits, and this was for cities that were bigger than 100,000 in population. And then the permitting hit us in the late 90s. Actually, they started in '99 with what they call a Phase II permit, which is everybody that wasn't covered in the Phase I permit. So all the cities that are less than 100,000, but in addition to that, it's some special districts, Coast Guard, places like that that kind of operate campuses were included in this Phase II permit. And the Phase II is a little different than the Phase I in that it's actually governed by the state. The state has a general permit under the Federal Clean Water Act, and then all of the Phase II agencies are included under the state permit. So it's kind of like when we're dealing with Bonner Bridge, and even though it's all federal money, everything goes through Caltrans because they handle that federal process. For the bridge program in California, the State Water Resources Control Board handles all the EPA stuff for the clean water in California. So everything we're doing, all the reporting, goes to the state level. So what the Phase II permit did for Larkspur is, we're mandated to do certain street sweeping to keep our streets clean, to reduce the amount of trash that gets in. That's already in effect. As you drive around construction sites, you probably see things like this. Those are all mandated. Those all came out of the Phase II permit. And they're basically erosion and sediment control measures that are aimed to keep trash sediment out of the storm drain and out of the creeks. So those things are all already included in the Phase II permit. These are wattles, the thing on the left that kind of fiber rolls. I typically see those at the edge of most sites. And then that's a catch basin drainage inlet protection on the left. And so what we're talking about today is an amendment to that Phase II permit that has been approved, and it's a trash amendment, and it aims to further reduce the amount of trash that end up in the creeks. And so permit agencies were given a choice of what they call the Track 1 or a Track 2 to comply with this. Track 1 essentially would mean that you would have to install filters on all of your catch basins, all of those DI's, those grates that I showed you. We would have to go around and install filters on all of those to keep the trash out. Those things are not only expensive, but they have a maintenance cost associated with them. When they clog up with leaves, they don't let the water drain, and so there's an ongoing maintenance cost with those. Track 2 option was given for municipalities that didn't want to commit to putting an individual filter on every single structure. They were allowed to propose a combination of other measures, such as increased street sweeping or daily or monthly creek or park cleanups, other ways to reduce the amount of trash. But it could also include some full capture devices, as in Track 1. And so every municipality, except for one in Marin, chose to do Track 2 because it gives us more options, and we made that choice last year. And then recently, we had to submit to the state a plan that says, how are we going to implement Track 2? What's that going to look like? Now, this is a document that we can change every year. In fact, we can even change and go to Track 1 if we want to. We just have these deadlines that we have to hit for submitting documentation. But everybody's kind of in the same boat here. We're all starting out in this program. We've got basically 10 years to reduce the amount of trash that gets to the waterways. And so the first couple of years are going to be basically pilot years, where we're trying out different things here and there. And so this is not, the way that the permit came down is they focused on areas that are typically considered to be high generators of trash. So this is high-density residential, industrial, commercial, mixed-use, and transit stops. So those are the areas that we have to focus in reducing the amount of trash that gets to the waterways. This is two maps. One is East Larkspur, one is West Larkspur. It's kind of hard to tell here. Actually, this, a lot of the efforts, I should mention, with this permit have been undertaken in conjunction with McStop staff, which is a Marin County Storm Water Pollution Prevention Program, of which we pay a fee to be a member of every year. So a lot of the legwork in putting the documents to submit has been done globally by McStop for all the agencies in Marin, and then we've all kind of customized them to our own needs. So these maps here actually show, as you can tell, some areas in Corder Madera, too, just because it's a countywide map. But this is, the orange and the yellows are the areas that are zoned and active in those previous classes that I mentioned, high-density residential and commercial-industrial. So the entirety of the city of Larkspur is just over three miles. They call them priority land use areas, is about 17% of that. Their figures, based on their research, shows that those areas in Larkspur generate about 3,300 gallons of trash that make it into the waterways each year. The next thing that was undertaken was staff from McStop and city staff went and walked the streets in all of these PLUs to determine how much trash is actually in these areas. And so they were all given a rating as far as low, moderate, high, and very high. We don't have very, there's one little area that rated very high, but most of what we have is moderate or low and a little bit of high. And what this does is, it sets a baseline. So when we come back each year and eventually at the end of 10 years to show that we complied, what we're doing is looking at the levels that they were before and trying to show that there was improvement in those levels. There is, and the staff report goes into a little bit more detail, and there's also the attachment, that's the document itself, that goes into all the different trash rates and how much each one of those areas actually contributes each year. We do actually already have a couple of trash capture devices installed over at Larkspur Plaza Drive. The map on the left, this is right at the last bend in that street by the city pump station, so the last two storm drain inlets before the water gets to the pump that pumps them out to the creek actually have filters in them already. So we put those in about a year ago for twofold. One, to kind of figure out what type of, there's many different filters out there, different systems we would want to use, and then also, we're trying to keep plastic water bottles out of our pump station because our pumps don't like them. Here's a couple of other examples. Basically, it's a filter that's intended to catch trash and hold it in a basket before it has an opportunity to get into the creek. They do have overflows on them, so one of the things here is, what is trash? So trash is not leaves. Trash is man-made debris that's on the street, but it goes down to everything the size of a cigarette butt, so 5 millimeters. These devices have to capture everything down to a size of 5 millimeters. And then they're only required to capture a one-year, one-hour storm. So obviously, when you put a grate or a filter in front of a storm drain structure like this, it reduces the amount of water that can get into that structure. So there's some trade-off point here where you're reducing the capacity of the storm drain because you're putting a filter in it, kind of acting like a dam. And so all of these trash capture devices are designed such that they'll catch everything from a one-year storm, but when you get our bigger storms, like the ones we get every five years only, that water would overtop the filter, and so it wouldn't impede the drainage, and your areas wouldn't flood because there's a trash capture device there. So those are the main two criteria for these devices, and obviously, these are, there are ones that are at the surface, too, but they, you have to maintain them more often because the trash ent still stays in the street. These ones are down in the structure, so they collect the trash a little better. You don't have to clean them out as often, but they're more expensive to clean out because you've got to get into the structure. So ballpark, there's many different types. We estimate, on average, you're probably about $1,000 each to buy and install one of these, and it's almost that every year to maintain them, especially the ones that are down in the, down in the manholes. If they're not maintained, we don't get credit for them. We have to report to the state on how often we maintain them because you can imagine if we don't maintain it and the trash builds up, then every bit of water and all the trash is just going to overtop that filter. So they're only given credit when they're maintained. So that's the filter insert that would be, you would do that on every single structure in your PLU if you chose Track 1. With Track 2, you can choose to do those in a few select locations, and in other locations, you can choose alternate methods. And so our submittal to the state has said, we're going to try some of these and measure the success and see where we get with them. And these are everything from street sweeping, so this would be enhanced beyond what we do now. There's a whole bunch of different ways to do that, either more frequently or different schedules based on when people park there. On-land cleanup, so we could organize clean the park day or clean the certain area day to try and reduce the amount of trash that's on the street so that it doesn't get to the storm drain and we don't need to filter in there. Spot inlet cleaning, we can go around and just clean some of our inlets out without having the filter in. And then we can manage our trash can collection and management throughout town also to try and reduce that amount of trash, make sure it gets into the trash cans and doesn't end up elsewhere in the parks and other areas. And then we can also organize creek cleanups. So our submittal to the state basically says, we're going to try as many of those things and see what we get traction with, and then we have to report out on the success of all of those. So at some point, there's a cost for installing a filter in a structure, or another point, there's a cost for trying something out and then measuring the success of it and trying it again the next year, and these are things we're going to evaluate. Fortunately, the trash amendment, the plan that we submitted, allows us to try these things, and we can change every year. We can change our mind and try something, say, that didn't really work, we want to focus more on this the next year. So if we do install a full capture device, that's it as far as follow-up goes, other than the maintenance we have to do and the reporting. We don't have to measure any levels of success. We don't have to go and walk the streets and measure the trash anymore. We put a full capture device in, and that area is assumed to be taken care of. If we don't do that and we choose one of the other methods, like we increase street sweeping, or we do more public engagement and flyers about trash and where it lands up, I think you've all seen the stencils on the catch basin inlets that say, don't dump here, it dumps, it drains to the, to the bay, things like that, then we would have to go and walk the streets again and measure and see how much trash is there and compare it to that base. is there and compare it to that baseline to show that that method, that the outreach that we've done and the other methods have been effective at reducing the amount of trash. And here is from, it's kind of hard to see, but from left to right, this is the very high to the low levels of trash. And they're not quite exponential, but there's quite a jump between the levels. And I think that is about all that I had in the presentation. Again, there is an action item regarding the storm drain master plan, and then the trash amendment was for information.
Okay, Julianne, thanks. That's, I think it's interesting stuff, necessary too. So why don't we go back to the consultant services first, which there's an ordinance. Is there any questions about the consultant services that he first described and talked about? Okay, Catherine?
So Julianne, out of, mapping the system, when we go to our jurisdictional boundary, are any of our pipes that we know of, our storm drains, connected to another jurisdiction? Like they flow through, for instance, Samorfell over the top of the hill and down, or through Corder Madera?
So the biggest area where we have that issue is up in the Greenberry Hills. We have storm drains that start out in Larkspur and then they flow through the county, and then they flow back through the city again, and then they flow through private property, and then they flow, so yes.
So is there ways to coordinate whatever those jurisdictions are doing?
Yeah, so we've, yeah, so we've reached out to both the county and Corder Madera. To a lesser extent, we have some pipes that start out in Larkspur and then go to Corder Madera and get discharged through their system.
Okay.
So we're at the top end of the system, so we likely don't have capacity issues. We don't take their water, basically. We, our water goes to Corder Madera. So there, we're more looking at the condition of our pipe. Up in the Greenberry Hills, we have issues where there's drainage that originates in the county and it comes into our system. And so we've already talked with County Public Works. I believe they're having an internal meeting on Monday to discuss what their role might be in participating in the study. It's kind of hard to, as far as the condition analysis goes, we could cut it off just to Larkspur and just look at our pipes. But when you're modeling and you're looking at the capacity of systems, you really need to do it on more of a global level. And so we're hopeful that the county will participate in some manner in that area of town to help us analyze the storm drain system.
That was where my concern was, was the modeling. Because if the modeling shows that their storm water is dumping into our system from a different system, then we need to know what that data is too.
Right.
All right. And in the picture with the construction barriers, when those are put up, is the construction professional or the firm responsible for maintenance of them, or is that our responsibility? Meaning our public works?
No, it's, it's, if it's a residential or a private project, then yeah, the contractor's responsible. If it's a capital project, a city project, then our contractor is responsible. Our own maintenance folks will only go and touch those if there's an emergency condition. It's always whoever put them there is responsible to maintain them. Some of them are somewhat self-maintaining. Others need, before storms, they need to be removed because they don't allow the flow, they don't have an overflow on them. The temporary construction ones are not as, not as good as the permanent ones that are designed to take that one-year storm. Some of those temporary ones, they actually need to physically go and alter them before a storm. As part of our phase two permit, we're required to go and make sure that they've been looked at before and after all of the storms.
Okay.
So we have our public works inspectors out to all the building sites, making sure that they know of their responsibility to maintain those before, during, and after storms.
So if, if there are these orange barrier storm drains that then get clogged, or construction barriers that then get clogged up after a storm, so it is a responsibility of the contractor to open those up?
Yes.
But is there an opportunity, let's say, for a resident to go on our website and ask for, ask for public works inspection of that?
They can submit a request on the request tracker. It'll come into our desk and it should get filtered as a, based on what the address is, we'll know where our city projects are and our private projects, and our inspector will be able to match that with the permit and get ahold of the right contractor.
Okay, great. I have some about the second half, but I'll wait until we get there.
Yeah, we'll finish this up. Larry, questions?
Not about the contract.
Okay, I do. What's your prediction with the storm drains? Do you think a lot of them are in bad shape from what you've seen the last storms?
Based on their age, I think for the most part, a lot of our metal pipes, we've had some issues with as far as corrosion. Now, a lot of those are going to be candidates for slip lining, which means we don't actually have to dig the street up. It's less expensive. You can actually get to them from both, you pull something through and it's like a resin and it actually forms a new pipe inside of the old pipe. Most of the concrete pipe is in good condition. Again, we have a few joints that we suspect may be out of place, and most of those are spot repairs as opposed to having to install new lengths of pipe. I think in most of the hill areas, we're not going to have issues with capacity. Most of our, most of the issues we have with capacity are not with the pipe size themselves or with the level of the water in the creek. And there's not much you can do about that with our storm drain, internal storm drains. So we're, based on what we've seen so far and the limited data that we have, we think we're going to have more condition issues than we are capacity issues. And it's probably going to be more in the corrugated metal pipes. But again, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to slip line most of those as opposed to digging them up, which reduces the cost somewhat. We don't really have a breakdown yet on what percentage overall of our system that is, so.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and leave the council and go to the public. Any public comments about this, about the report? I see none, so I'll bring it back to the council. Should we pass, I want to make a motion for the resolution 8718?
Can I ask a few things about the trash part?
Well, that's next.
Oh, that's next, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So we have a resolution 8718, a resolution of the city council of the city of Larkspur awarding a consultant service, services contract to Schaff and Wheeler in the amount of $80,000 for the storm drain master plan under the capital improvement project.
I'll move resolution 8718.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? I see none, it passes. All right, so now we'll move on to the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System.
That's a mouthful.
Yeah. Do you have somewhere? Ask, do you have questions?
Oh, okay, I'll, I'll start. On your page that lists the very high and high, I can see the high trash numbers are often related to our commercial areas. Do you have any idea why very high is on that corner of, of Bonner Road and Sir Francis Drake that isn't a commercial area? I, I think those are office complexes. I'm just curious as to why.
Yeah.
That's across from the high school area, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's, I actually did, I drive that almost every day, but I did specifically drive that after I saw this because that is the only area in town that rated the very high. It was not very high the day I drove it, but they actually did two surveys. They did a survey during the winter and one during the summer. And they, so it wasn't just a random. I, I don't really have an explanation because if, I know there's a transit stop around the corner, but the transit stops were dealt with separately.
Interesting, I'm just curious as to why it's there for that area, because it's, it doesn't seem to be an area where people would gather. But, okay, and then lastly is, so actually on your back page, and it's just out of curiosity, one of the things are untarped loads or debris falling from cars and trucks, which is kind of on the up-left side of here. Did they do any assessment of whether that is an impact in Larkspur? Because I know untarped pickup and dump loads is a huge problem on Highway 101. But I'm just curious if that's, if we find that that happens here because we have a lot of construction projects.
It hasn't been identified specifically, but it's been listed as a measure that we will look at and evaluate. So for the background for this, the McStop basically looked at all the trash levels and then we kind of, we didn't really do any deep drill downs into the alternate methods because we have the two years to evaluate them as a pilot project. So we basically listed them all so that we have the opportunity to see which one best fits. But we don't really have the data on, couldn't really say at this point whether enforcing tarped loads or enhancing our street sweeping is the way we're going to go. We're going to kind of try them and see what gets the best results.
Okay, thanks. Nothing else?
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, who is the city that decided to go track one?
Town of Ross.
Okay, so it's not one of our adjacent neighbors where we would have to have a higher threshold, like go to track one also on those drains feeding in. Okay, you had mentioned that there'd be, our general metric right now or baseline is 3,300 gallons of trash per year. How much of an improvement are they expecting over the course of 10 years?
I would have to go back and do the math in the tables, but the requirement is that all of those areas get down to what is classified as the low level. So that's basically the, we don't have to get rid of the 3,300. Whatever the, the metric is for the gallons per acre that's listed as low, that across all of the acreages in our PLUs, that's what our goal is to get down to.
So it's really about bringing down a higher level severity down to, to the low, rather than say specifically the 3,300 gallons?
Correct.
Because 3,300 gallons would then take care of itself.
Correct. It's bringing everything to a certain level. 3,300 is just what it is today.
Just out of curiosity, if you had to go to track one, what would it cost the city? Like how many storm drains do we have?
We did a preliminary evaluation. There's, and again, it gets a little tricky in that there are areas that are private that go through public. We're responsible for those areas. So regardless of whether the trash or the storm water originates on private or city property, if it comes through the city storm drain, then we have to treat that and reduce the trash from that area. So depending on where we would put them and if we would go into private property and put them, or put them in the first catch basin that's on the city that the private stuff comes to, there's between 180 and 200 structures where we'd have to install these. So that's in the $200,000 range for installation. But depending on which one you put in, the installation is just the upfront cost. These things are very labor intensive. Like I said, you've got to clean them out or you don't get credit for their use. So it's almost that again every year. I think it was, we estimated $1,000 each and then 700 a year for, for cleaning. So I think it's, the track one, we had put between a million and a million and five over the 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Julianne, track two, street sweeping. So we have to hire out for that, correct?
We do contract for that service, yes.
Okay, and so do you have to put up signs saying these streets will be cleaned at certain, how are you going to let people know not to park?
Well, so that is, that's one of the options. There are many different ways to enhance street sweeping, from as simple as overhauling your schedule to analyzing when people do park and trying to avoid that, to extremes such as putting up no parking when you have the street sweeper coming through. So we don't have that other than one area in town, I guess. But it's something that we would evaluate along with all of the other items. I think, based on the information I got from McStop, that's, doesn't seem to be a direction that most of the other cities are going, but.
It's not.
But we, again, we've included it because we don't want to rule anything out.
Okay, and trash cans, do you have a certain idea, are you going to, are you thinking of truly putting up more trash cans around the city?
It's not necessarily, it could be more trash cans, but it could also be making sure that we've got all of the newer style trash cans that contain the trash better, or making sure that our trash cans are fastened down so they don't get knocked over and trash gets on the street, or that they get picked up every 10 days instead of every 15 days. There's, again, there's a number of parameters and ideas under all of these things. And, and again, the document we submitted to the state lets us evaluate all of these. It doesn't lock us into any one specific recourse.
But like the creek cleanups, it's all by volunteers, right? So it's something that, yeah. Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm done, yeah.
If, if you're looking at $140,000 in annual recurring costs for track one, how quick would it take for you to get there with track two? Have you had any general sense of that? Because if you look at these things, it may not quite be as labor intensive, but you still have extra labor involved.
Yeah, and that's going to be part of the analysis too, is some of these things may be, the alternate measures may be really effective, but there may be a high cost associated with them. And some of them may only be marginal, but they may be relatively no cost to the city. So I, I don't imagine it's going to be any one item off this list. It's probably going to be a combination that's going to have to take all of those things into account. And it may be that we get a certain way through this thing and we say, you know, we need to lean a little bit more to track one and be a blend and not go track one and put them in everywhere, but we may end up with 50% of our inlets have these because there's no other way to, to deal with it. These measures aren't effective there. And we're open to, you know, under track two, we could install 179 out of the 180 inlets and put out a flyer for the 180th and we'd still technically be track two.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good approach because that's what I was kind of thinking after I, after you gave the numbers and it came out to about 140,000. Because at that point, if you went track one, say in your high-impact areas like the industrial districts, you know, that, your, your annual cost might actually end up being somewhere in between and be more effective at recuperating the trash in those areas and bringing down the low.
Yeah. And again, we're not going to be alone in this. We're going to have our own unique conditions here in Larkspur, but every other municipality, all our neighbors are going through the same thing. They all submitted the same documents last week. And McStop's going to keep holding meetings so we can all exchange information. And it may be that, hey, Larkspur tries this and Corder Madera tries that, and we exchange notes and it, you know, may end up getting us to the ultimate goal quicker.
I like that, great. Julianne?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. To 8.2, Presentation on Updates to State Law Affecting Local Regulations of Accessory Dwelling Units Under Larkspur Municipal Code Section 18.23. So we're going to receive a report? Hi Neil, I know.
This is pretty thick.
This is thorough.
Here tonight, we're to discuss new state mandates regarding accessory dwelling units. And I have with me Lorraine Weiss. She's a planning consultant who's worked with Larkspur on occasion and is assisting in this endeavor. Staff is in the process of preparing updates to our municipal code to comply with state law. And we did in October, hold a study session with the planning commission to review this. And we wish to inform the council of their direction and receive any comments before we go forward with finalizing a draft ordinance to bring to the commission and the council. So with that, accessory dwelling units, what are they? Well, they're, they're typically smaller dwelling units, have kitchen facilities, bedrooms, wash facilities, separate entrance, often known as granny units or secondary dwelling units. But technically, we're now referring to them as accessory dwelling units. And there's a reason for this related to state housing law. So just some quick framework here. California state law requires cities to have a housing element, very detailed part of the general plan, highly regulated by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And it does require that cities provide a regional fair share, and this is referred to as the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA. And I'm sure the council's familiar with what that means, so I won't go into detail. But every updated housing element must be submitted to HCD. element must be submitted to HCD and ensure compliance with housing law. And failure to receive a certified housing element can result in a variety of consequences which are not desirable to the community. And additionally, recent state legislation, notably SB 35, was adopted into law in 2018. And it is now requiring not just that cities plan for and make policies to encourage housing, but also perform and produce the housing and meet the housing goals. And failure to do that is now, creates a possibility of the state creating mandates or overrides to your local zoning regulations and your design review. We are now seeing some more aggressive legislation being considered that may increase the city's exposure to having some form of mandated development without our local design review and oversight. Now, in terms of our pace of meeting our RENA, Larkspur is somewhat middle of the road. We had a good amount of housing developed through the Rose Garden Development, and that's, so that's met a good portion. We're having, we're very challenged to meet our very low housing affordability requirement. And we do see that Marin County as a whole and the agencies are projected on pace to meet about two-thirds of their required goals. So from the perspective of the state, we're not fully on track to meet our housing goals. And again, there is legislation being considered to really push some overrides of local control. We did, in 2015, adopt a new housing element, included goals to encourage development of second units, and we also adopted policies for regulating junior accessory dwelling units, sort of a dwelling unit light. And in this, the City Council recognized that accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, hopefully can contribute to meeting our RENA requirements, as opposed to simply moving forward with or having to do large-scale housing developments. So to go through the zoning ordinance and how this affects the zoning, historically, Larkspur has, had required a conditional use permit in order to put in what were called secondary dwelling units. And this was somewhat of a barrier to developing units. Public hearings involving neighbors often discouraged property owners from pursuing that course. They would often meet with objection. In 2003, the city adopted an ordinance to require simply ministerial review for accessory dwelling units as long as they met certain standards, including size limits, studios of one bedrooms, and as long as they met the parking requirements. And with that, we've been on pace since 2003 at about one accessory dwelling unit a year. In 2016, we did update that regulation to identify these as accessory dwelling units, not second dwelling units. And we also adopted regulations for junior accessory dwelling units. Now, in 2017 and then 2018, the city has adopted legislation to really provide relief for the housing shortage and regulate, limit local regulation of accessory dwelling units. So in summary, a few of these regulations are, that these can be converted through conversion of existing space. There'd be very limited regulations or controls on that. It would set maximum and minimum ADU sizes, limits where fire sprinklers can be required, and limits utility fees, which are often an expensive barrier to second units, and requires ministerial approval as long as you meet all standards. Further, the legislation applies some fairly restrictive limits on parking standards that local agencies can impose. It does allow for a maximum of one parking space for an ADU, and specifies that no additional parking can be required. It does allow that parking space or any replacement parking to be located kind of anywhere on the site, and in tandem with two or more automobiles. And I highlight in tandem because, and that determination, because often in tandem is defined as one vehicle behind another, only two vehicles, but this can allow up to three or four vehicles in a row. And additionally, the legislation requires no parking under a range of very specific conditions. Largely what applies to Larkspur is properties within a half-mile of transit or bus stops. That's where we're going to see a restriction on any parking requirement. The cities can set certain additional regulations prohibiting short-term rental use, which we do in any case. We can require owner occupancy of the ADU or the primary residence, the main dwelling. We can identify development standards. As long as these development standards are consistent or applied to the property as a whole, to any other building or accessory structure as a whole, they cannot be really particular to the ADU. And they cannot preclude, be designed in such a way they preclude accessory dwelling units. So in October, we did hold a study session with the Planning Commission. And a large, a lot of the focus was on various topics and various regulations, and the degree to which the city should build upon these state mandates and liberalize regulations in order to encourage ADU production, or apply regulations to maintain existing standards as much as possible, and essentially constrain ADU production and maintain community character. The overriding theme of, or the message that we received from the Planning Commission was really to retain local control and constrain the impacts to the neighborhoods as much as possible. They did indicate that ADUs should be encouraged, but were concerned with really what might be concerned, identified as unconstrained development in the neighborhoods. And they ultimately indicated some of larger housing projects, affordable housing projects in areas near transit are needed truly to address the city's housing goals. Now, we discussed and received comments on some of these specific topics, and we'll go over those with you in just a minute. And we have attached a matrix that identifies, does comparison of local ADU, local accessory dwelling unit regulations in the state, and areas that we really do need to update our local regulations, and areas where we could have some options. And with that, I'd like to introduce Lorraine Weiss to summarize some of the particular topics of concern and the direction that was provided by the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor Morrison and council members. So I'm going to go over some of the major discussion topics, and then receive a direction from the council. So the first is, would be the interior ADUs versus attached and detached accessory dwelling units. In terms of state law, the state law requires more limited regulations for interior accessory dwelling units or conversions. There's a no parking requirement and no location restrictions permitted in any single-family dwelling site. Staff would be drafting an ordinance which includes definition for the interior accessory dwelling unit conversions, as opposed to detached accessory dwelling units. The next topic would be accessory dwelling unit floor area size limit. The state law allows a 1,200-square-foot maximum and encourages flexibility to incentivize the creations of accessory dwelling units. Increasing flexibility in the standards would obviously encourage more units. Currently, Larkspur code allows a 700-square-foot maximum floor area with one-bedroom or studio unit. The Planning Commission in their discussion recommended that smaller units would make the accessory dwelling units more affordable to build and rent, and would in the end probably reduce parking demand. Staff is preparing a draft ordinance to maintain the current 700-square-foot maximum restriction and one-bedroom limit. The next topic would have been the height limit above accessory structures. State law prescribed certain setbacks and exceptions above garages and accessory structures, which encourages adding accessory dwelling units onto accessory structures. The current Larkspur code requires a 15-foot height maximum, restricts the ability to add second stories onto accessory structures, in that if you did that, you could only do it with a variance. The Planning Commission recommended not to exacerbate bulk en masse and to maintain discretionary review. It is important to realize that if a second unit were to be put on to a garage, in, in Larkspur, it could only occur with a variance because we have a 15-foot maximum. And the state law does not allow for design review on a case-by-case basis unless it includes additional entitlements with the planning application. So it would have to be with a variance or an FAR exception. So staff right now is preparing a draft ordinance to maintain the current 15-foot height limit for accessory structures unless directed otherwise by the City Council. There are various parking requirements for accessory dwelling units. Currently, Larkspur requires one independent accessible parking space for an ADU. State law requires no more than one parking space, and that can be anywhere on-site, and it could be tandem parking. State law overrides additional parking requirement for sites within a half-mile transit station and bus stops. They also, would occur also for interior ADUs or conversions. Many neighborhoods in, along Magnolia Avenue, around Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and Highway 101, would be exempt from the parking requirement. I will show you a graphic in a moment that shows it. The Planning Commission recommended requiring additional parking where possible within the constraints of the state law. This graphic shows a half-mile radius around the bus stops. It is a line-of-sight radius. We're drafting an ordinance which would take into account based on walking distance. Some of these stops are school bus stops along Dodery Drive, and what we're trying to do is draft an ordinance which would better define the commuter transit stops. And then parking for the main dwelling unit, Larkspur currently requires all required off-street parking for the main dwelling unit to include two primary parking spaces and two guest spaces. The city attorney has informed us that agencies can only require that sites maintain the existing legal non-conforming parking condition. For example, if there were two legal non-conforming spaces for the main dwelling unit, and then you added an accessory dwelling unit, you'd only be required to provide the two for the main dwelling unit, not the additional two guest parking spaces that would normally be required for an R1, single-family home. Agencies can require replacement of required parking spaces or garage spaces lost in conjunction with the ADU development. So right now, staff is preparing a draft ordinance that requires replacement of the existing parking. Another topic of concern is owner occupancy. Currently, Larkspur code requires owner occupancy either of the main dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit, and it's through a deed restriction. Owner occupancy can be considered a barrier to accessory dwelling unit development, and state law right now is silent on the matter. However, we have been told that there may be some upcoming revisions to the state law where they may relax that requirement so that there would not be a requirement for owner occupancy to hopefully create even more additional ADUs. The Planning Commission, however, recommended that owner occupancy requirement be retained to maintain the neighborhood character and avoid nuisance issues that are related to absentee ownership. The Planning Commission felt it was really important to have owner occupancy to assure the responsibility upon the property owner to manage and have better direct oversight of issues that come along with some of the rental units. So staff right now is preparing a draft ordinance that would retain the owner occupancy requirement unless otherwise directed by the council. Then another topic would be accessory dwelling unit locations. So right now, in Larkspur, we require, or allow for, ADUs on single-family properties within the R1, the R2, the R3, the SD, and the GD districts. State law allows cities to identify neighborhoods in which attached and detached ADUs may be restricted due to limited adequacy of water and sewer services and the impact on traffic flow and public safety. State law preamps any restriction for interior ADUs or conversions permitted for a single-family use. We're reviewing with the Fire Department and the City Attorney's Office criteria to determine which areas could actually be restricted. For example, areas deep within the Madron Avenue, served by one-way traffic flow, could be considered an area that we would restrict. But we would like to seek additional council direction on what you might think about restricting certain areas for ADUs. And then in terms of next steps, as I was saying, we are preparing a draft ordinance that maintains local control and regulatory standards as much as possible within the constraints of state law. We would ask your direction to proceed as recommended by the Planning Commission, or do more to incentivize ADUs. We will prepare an ADU ordinance, present it to the Planning Commission at a public hearing sometime early in 2019, and then we would forward it to the City Council for review and adoption. So I am open to questions by the council, and hopefully we can continue on with this.
Great. Thank you, Neil and Lorraine.
And one other thing I did want to add is, kind of like Julian was talking about, working with some of the other cities countywide coordinating storm drain solutions. Next week, I'm going to be attending a, we're going to, starting a standing meeting of a housing working group with planning directors in the county to work on topics and better coordinate best practices for housing and addressing the state mandates and public outreach for issues such as ADU development and such. And ADUs will continue to be a topic. I know a lot of the cities are each trying to find their path as to how to balance the issues of ADU production with the community needs and congestion. And there's a lot of different ideas floating out there. And as also mentioned, the state is going to, it appears they're looking to do more changes to the state law. So we may fairly readily see new regulations that might override, whether it's owner occupancy, or a height limit, or something like that. We'll be monitoring that, and we, we may have to simply deal with that as we hit this revision, and we'll keep the council apprised.
Okay, great.
So any questions on particular topics?
We have lots of questions.
Thank you.
That, I guarantee you. That's a great presentation. Thank you. Larry?
I'll start out with a few of them first, just to get it out of the way. When we did the junior second units, we were told that you can't make them affordable, or they weren't. I mean, originally, the legislation was going to go in, and they were supposed to have been affordable units. So if junior second units and these accessory units do not have an affordability requirement, then the only thing we're really solving is just these absolute number, but we're not taking care of our, say, 30%, 50% median income range. So how do we reconcile that? Or why should we even let someone do it if it doesn't solve a problem for us?
Well, there has been, there has been discussion on that topic and how the cities survey and conduct surveys to determine whether the ADUs are affordable. If you do it, if you impose affordability restrictions, in many cases- you impose affordability restrictions, in many cases, you may well be, you're creating an additional barrier. So there's a, it's a balance between trying to incentivize the ADUs or creating a barrier, and some of the cities are looking at kind of bonus programs. If you don't require, if you don't provide parking, but you can provide affordability, then that might be an option. And/or if you get extra floor area, you can do that if you make it an affordable unit and you apply a deed restriction. It becomes sort of an affordable unit for 10 or 15 years. So there are programs being reviewed, being considered along those lines, but it is kind of the tension between trying to incentivize the development of these units smaller, more affordable by design, but not necessarily meeting the affordability standard. And the other thing I'd say, in the past, we have counted some of these units towards our low and moderate income because surveys had, we had been able to justify it through past surveys that, that units could meet these limits. I don't think, I don't know that the state's going to, or HCD is going to accept that as readily today because they're requiring higher reporting standards. And it'll, this does present an interesting tension between a desire to try to create ADUs, more infill development, yet how do you make them affordable if you create more regulations and barriers to doing that?
Yeah, I just see it as a giveaway in the respect that if somebody's got a 700-square-foot unit, it's, it pretty much expected that you're going to get at least 1,500 for it. So that means at a 30% level in terms of what you consider housing affordability, now you're looking at an annual income of $60,000. That's not affordable, you know? So from a public policy standpoint, we're really not achieving our goal.
Well, and part of the, part of the, part of the surveying approach, as I think, as I'm understanding it too, is a number of these units are not actually, not always rented. And in fact, they're serving as housing for, in some cases, it might be a student back from college, or somebody, a friend looking for a job, or for the grandmother, or grandfather, or for a au pair, somebody who helps with the household. And in fact, to some degree, there are survey, there are survey approaches where that is taken into account and that the, there's a balance-out effect where these are actually considered affordable because you have a portion of these going towards very low income or just simply being, providing that housing number. And I could, I could try to give, I think, better perspective on that. We didn't really do that exercise here. And in fact, that's part of our discussion at the working group, is how can we, how do we really survey these and determine whether we're really meeting some affordability standard? Because unless you're achieving some sort of benefit with the city, excuse me, with HCD and the RENA from that aspect, and that's our biggest challenge is affordability, what are we really necessarily accomplishing in terms of these penalties and mandates?
Yeah, and I'd agree with that statement, maybe from a different way, so we'll save that for another discussion. What happens to the parking requirement if you convert a carport or a garage into a second unit? Because you would end up being net negative on your parking requirements.
If it is a, if it is part of your required parking, that you would have to relocate, you'd have to find that parking somewhere else on the site. So as we're, as we would design this ordinance, you could not rely upon a, say, a garage that was illegally converted at some point in time, or to simply convert a garage that is required parking without relocating and creating that parking as an offset. So you can't, while we may not require an additional parking space, you, we would not necessarily allow a net negative. And that, the state law provides for that or allows for that.
If, if you can't have certain restrictions, but you allow these second units to go into high-hazard fire zones, what if it creates, let's just say, an additional public safety component if people are not able to keep the streets clear for emergency vehicles because there's insufficient parking?
Well, the, I know, I think one thing is that the city does require that in the hillside areas, the parking in narrow areas, the parking is required to be striped, and the public works and fire department do, do that.
Yeah, it's already saturated.
Yeah. But, but it's already in high demand, and we've realized that. And that's, in fact, those are, those are in the areas where, as they're further away from transit, we're more likely to be able to require onsite parking as opposed to the areas close to downtown or close to Magnolia and Sir Francis Drake, which are near transit, and we cannot necessarily require parking. Those neighborhoods certainly have, can have parking challenges as well.
Yeah.
But in terms of, in terms of, if there, if parking begins to obstruct the roadway, that would be, it would either be a symptom of not, you know, maybe you don't have enough parking, but the, that would be an illegal parking condition if it's not parking where it's properly striped. Is there, does that answer the question, or is there something?
No, I think what's happening is you're, by allowing this to occur, it could have an unintended consequence of making an already saturated area with restricted parking even worse, to the point that enforcement, if we choose to go that route, would make it so that people could end up walking like in the Madrone Canyon because the closest place they can park is on Magnolia. You know, things like that.
Yeah, and I think that was, that certainly was reflected in the commission's comments and concerns, and the fire department has expressed some concerns about evacuation, the ability to evacuate neighborhoods where you do have a lot, a high level, a high number of properties that are served through a narrow one, single street. And what, in discussing this with city attorney, what we really recognize is we do need to come up, if we're going to take an approach of restricting certain locations, we do need to come up with a fairly objective criteria of why certain neighborhoods, we may restrict that. One thing to keep in mind on that topic again is the state law allows for conversion on any single-family site. So if it's an internal conversion, that's not applicable. It's only in the case of some new construction, whether it's through remodeling and adding or else constructing a new structure, that we can restrict location.
Yeah, with all these things that are being prohibited in terms of what we can't, you know, what we're going to be allowed to do, it, it has a potential impact on some of these things. I just don't know how to address it right now.
But Larry, to sort of further elaborate on that, though, you can't, and I see this in the staff report, whether this is a legal thing for us to do, they're evaluating it. We can't, for instance, restrict maybe five teenagers living in a home who all drive a vehicle. So whether, even if they're in a single-family home and not an accessory dwelling unit. So I don't, I'm not sure legally how we can restrict based on the number of individuals who are occupying a space.
Yeah, and that's a really tough thing because, you know, like, you made the statement earlier where you said, "A person in a smaller unit is likely to have, you know, a less need for parking," and I don't think that's true because, you know, if it's big enough for one person to live in, they're going to have very likely one car. And if it's, if a couple decides that they're going to live there, it's very likely they're going to have two cars. You know, that's just Marin. So, you know, you end up in these situations like you're, what you're saying exactly, and what's exacerbating this problem is when people are not using their off-street parking.
Yeah.
On top of it all. So you end up with what has already been reported at TAM, where you have more vehicles than you have licensed drivers in Marin. And that's been a big shift, you know, I can't remember, you know, how long this has been. I'm just saying that. That's how Marin looks now. When you look at the statewide average of being 2/3 of a vehicle per licensed driver.
But I think we probably find that in our own Rose Lane complex where that it's supposed to be a single car, and there are many occupants there who have multiple cars.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the evidence is there within our own community.
Yeah, so we already have a problem, and then we're creating a bigger problem by not being able to have any discretionary review. I'll just ask one more question for now. That half-mile radius, it was shown on the graph as being a half-mile from the transit stops that are within Larkspur. But there are transit stops outside of Larkspur where the circles will overlap in the neighborhoods in Larkspur. So how do they measure that half-mile? Any transit stop or just the Larkspur ones?
No, it would include any transit stop. I think arguably, under, under the law, it would be any transit stop. And actually, we didn't, we didn't test that real directly, but there's not a significant overlap. I mean, it's already pretty saturated with the transit stops we have, but we could add that in. And again, what we, what we will be doing is identifying this as walking distance. So you begin to draw lines up streets and through locations, and it, it begins to constrain down these circles quite a bit in some areas. So there are ways to try to capture more parking in the neighborhoods. And then some of these stops that are shown here are actually bus stops, our school bus stops as shown on Doertie Drive, and we believe that we can define these as commuter bus stops.
Sorry, just one more.
Some communities are drawing that distinction.
Yeah, one of the comments sounded like you could put an accessory unit on any place on the lot. Did I interpret the comment properly? My first reaction was that there was no consideration for setbacks. And if that's true, and a property owner who is adjacent to that doesn't like that, how did, or are you already shaping?
No, you can, you can, we can still apply setbacks according to our current regulations. One thing the state law does do is it limits setbacks above garages. So assuming it's an attached garage, because we have height limits for accessory structures, so assuming it's attached garage, there's no more than a five-foot setback to a property line. And it also allows for the conversion of non-conforming structures or accessory structures. So if, for instance, you have a garage that is on the property line, or an accessory structure on the property line, you can convert that to an ADU without having to meet what might typically be, terming it a new use and saying, "Well, you need to meet a setback requirement for that type of use," because some communities would do that. Now, we would still apply certain fire safety and building code measures, but it's, that essentially, we can apply most of the same setbacks we currently do.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, Larry?
No, for now.
Okay. Catherine?
So I want to start with the floor area size limit. Our current ordinance is 700 square feet. The state law now allows 1,200 square feet. And the assumption that the Planning Commission seems to have said here was that they recommend keeping the current 700 because it would be more affordable. So are they basing that on any data that they have about whether we have residents who were able to afford a 1,200-square-foot and would like to have that opportunity? Or are they?
No, well, I think they're working from a, simply a generalization that the, that a 1,200-square-foot unit, there's a lot of homes that comparatively, that starts approaching the size of a small home in Larkspur. And so historically, having had a 700-square-foot limit and a requirement for no more than a studio or one bedroom, has been a standard in Larkspur. And their perception, and we, we had indicated this ourselves, like, there's sort of two approaches, is you make it more flexible, and you may, you may capture more second units for people who are interested in building a larger one with two or three bedrooms. But arguing on the side of character and potentially reducing parking demand, they felt that keeping it at 700 square feet and keeping it at a limited number of bedrooms, sort of small by design, more affordable by design, was a desirable path to go.
So it's more of a philosophical belief in the keeping the character?
Well, and if you, and if you simply go by sort of price per square foot, you know, a smaller unit is generally going to rent for less. But it's going to be more compromise in terms of availability or who might want to live there.
So the 1,200, the 700-square-foot would really be a compromise, then, to not allow more flexibility for homeowners who may have a larger lot and may have better capacity? I'm just wondering why we would constrain it, because we already know we have limits and constraints by the size of the lot anyway, so many of our residents aren't going to be able to build 1,200 square feet. But there may be some who do. Why would we not have that one, why would we limit that if we have opportunity there? I'm just not sure.
That's a good question.
Well, and I think if, if there is a, if there's an approach you'd like us to look at in terms of allowing for larger size, we could, we could do that. I think that the limit was really just seen as a way of considering that the state law, the state law will mandate situations that may be a large lot near transit where you can't require additional parking. So I think they're just looking at it as an issue of scale, both in terms of physical scale within the community and minimizing the potential parking and use impacts.
I just think it's valuable to keep all of our options open with these things. So whatever that turns out, I don't know how many lots would be accessible for 1,200-square-foot additions, because that is a larger amount. But it may actually work for only a few. I mean, we've only had one ADU permit in the last year, so we're not talking huge numbers of people looking at this, but there, I'd like to keep some flexibility, but that's my approach. It's the same thing with the height limit restriction, the 15-foot. When you look around town, you can see at times when a lot of people built that second bedroom or the family room above the garage, you know? And above the garage is sort of usable space that's already there on the existing footprint of the property, right? So I'm not sure that restricting the 15-foot height limit gives us enough flexibility either. I mean, many of our homes are already, a second story is how many, that's 30 feet? Or what's the average second story?
Well, it can be anywhere from 20 to 30 feet, depending on slope and how it's, and roof peak and things like that, and plate heights. But you can, you can really squeeze something into about 15 or 16 feet if you're just absolutely kind of dug in on flat with very, very little construction board in between. The, so you're really looking at a comfort zone of around 20 to 25 square feet to build a small, a second story on a small sort of structure.
Yeah, just, it's just one of those ones that made me think that we were sort of narrowing the funnel down further and further, which would make it even more restrictive for people to do this. And I don't actually see, I mean, I understand the rationale of bulk and mass and really wanting to keep a, a character issue in there, but I think, I prefer flexibility, but.
Well, and I think the, the other, the other challenge, if it is, either we allow for a larger height for accessory, accessory structures in general, so change the standard, because you can't necessarily just apply a separate standard for
For these.
An ADU.
Yeah.
If we do apply a separate standard and we say, "Okay, you can, we can go to a higher height for an ADU, but not for other uses," then we need to look at some form of restrictive approach, a deed restriction or something that says, "Okay, you've done this because you're building an ADU, or you're meeting an affordability requirement, so we're giving you like a physical bonus." When you give that physical bonus, you then have to sort of maintain that or, or control that in perpetuity and, or to some degree.
I see your point.
So you begin presenting a different way. And that, that is, we've kind of been looking at, some cities are considering or creating bonus programs to encourage to do just that, to make exceptions to either parking or height or floor area standard in order to -- height or floor area standard, in order to allow for an ADU, or allow particularly for an affordable ADU, to have an affordability restriction. The challenge is you begin creating a very onerous sort of oversight process, and we still have so far yet to see where all this housing
Right. It's going to change a lot in the next couple of years.
I'm, I'm a little reluctant to jump us into a whole process, and that's one of the reasons I'm, I'm interested in this housing working group, is to really see what practices are creating solutions and/or else creating just simply more onerous oversight.
I think that makes a lot of sense, because I think this is changing, and there are cities that are jumping into, I'll give you an example. In Santa Cruz, they created emergency ordinance to allow residential dormitories, because they have such a student housing crisis there. So the little suburban three-bedroom, two-bath houses, like the one across from my parents, has been cut into 10 bedrooms. So they immediately have 10 bedrooms in a res-
10 cars.
And 10 cars. And, I mean, it was, nobody knew that that, I don't think they had really thought through the impact to community when a residential dormitory shows up in a suburban little neighborhood. So, but that's just a sidebar on that. And my last thing is, also, I've been reading a lot about the creation of iceberg homes, you know, where people are excavating down below, because then the bulk and mass stays, like the neighbor next to you is doing that. They're excavating very deep down so that they can put a lot of their floor area below ground and keep the bulk and mass visually down, so it's sort of the bulk of the icebergs underground. Where could we be seeing that happening? And people need to have the 1,200-square-foot opportunity because they're actually going to go underground? Does that make sense?
Well, I think, clarify your question. You have a good, you have a good point about the iceberg.
Yeah, like a dugout basement area.
Yeah, and are you asking if we have a higher floor area allowance? Is that going to, is that something that might better incentivize, like through the digging approach? Is that your question?
I think it just goes back to my floor, my floor area size limit, that we have opportunities that, that could still maintain the character by the decrease in the bulk and mass, because people are starting to look at under-dwelling areas. So I'm just still wanting to make sure we don't, we keep our flexibility of the 1,200, if that is a potential construction opportunity where people go down below. And you're kind of shaking your head, so I don't know if it's, makes sense.
Well, I think as a possibility, in some instances, you have to look at it case by case, because there are areas of Larkspur that experience flooding.
Yeah.
So probably in the low-lying areas where flooding has been historically an issue, chances are the sort of under-story units would not be allowed. And we'd have to probably really work with Public Works and the Building Department to find out specifically what the requirements would be for that. They would probably take special building code requirements.
And I, and I do think we're, we're aware of kind of the new phenomenon of where digging and excavating to such a degree has become kind of financially viable approach to creating floor space, and even creating the habitability of that type of floor space, because that can be challenging, not having egress and ventilation and all those things. And I think Larry's neighbor is probably an example, not quite an iceberg, but certainly is using some excavation to create some significant storage and basement space. But that, that's probably even presents a whole nother discussion with the council, because those areas, we don't really, in flat areas, we don't have planning regulations over grading and floor space. It's not really counted as floor area when it's below grade. So we don't, we don't actually have a strong, what you call a strong control over that type of, from a zoning standpoint.
Thanks. That's all I have.
As an offer, suggestion, after listening to your comments, Councilmember Way, you may want to consider, and we can explore, maintaining a lower level for the square footage, and then assigning us the task of trying to come up with potential criteria by which the city would consider exceptions. That way, you still sort of signal their preferences for something in scale to the neighborhood, but that you recognize there may be properties and conditions where you would consider exceptions.
I'd be comfortable with that, because I think there, that will allow some of our property owners who may want to build a larger structure to house two grandparents or something like that. We don't have very many properties that would be able to do that, but I want to see that they can have that opportunity, so if that works.
Okay. Anything else, Catherine?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so between my two councilmembers, all the questions have been asked. I do look forward, Neil, when you go to the workshop to find out more what's, what the other cities are considering in your discussions. It's going to be interesting. How can we help you here? Did we do our due diligence, or do you need?
Well, I think, I think we've got pretty strong feedback. I do sense from Councilmember Chu, sort of an affirmation of concern regarding the parking and the safety issues, and emergency egress and some of those issues. I, I take from Vice Mayor Way's comments, oh, excuse me.
It's okay.
Vice Mayor Chu, Councilmember Way's comments, you're, you're on the other side, that some flexibility ought to be considered, particularly for properties that could probably manage or afford some larger sizes, may provide parking, so on. So we'll take a look at that as well. I think we've got some good feedback to work from.
Great, all right. Thank you.
And you also, that, that last comment that, that was in there, the city attorney was going to look at the ability for us to restrict it based on evacuation routes, because I'm very curious as to whether we have that opportunity to, if, whether that's legal for us to do that, so.
We're, we're going to look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Neil and I had already talked about it some. We'll need to bring in the Fire Department and Police Departments and, and see if there's some objective standards that can be identified to identify some areas where we think that we could make a meaningful case that the addition of more residents and more cars is going to result in a meaningful inability to evacuate an area.
I think it's also a curious time now, because I don't know if you saw Ken Pimlot, who's retiring Cal Fire Chief this Friday's, comments today about his lessons learned in 30 years of fire services, that we can't build in some of these areas. And, you know, he just made a big statement today that much, much of Butte County shouldn't be rebuilt. And I think we're going to see some cur, some interesting things happen in this.
That will make some, for some interesting eminent domain.
Yes, it will.
And inverse condemnation law.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's an interesting time in that extent.
Well, Neil and Lauren, thank you very much.
And I was just going to say, I realize that there are no members of the public here, but just to, just to make sure that there are no public comments.
I was going to open up to the public, but I don't see anybody out there, so. Right back to the council. All right, we're all set. So with that, I, this council meeting's adjourned.
Yay.
Oh, hey, Glenn. Right? Super.